Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Claussen City Council meeting of Tuesday, April 17th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation that will be done by Reverend Ray Sherbath from Our Shepherd Lutheran Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Oh God Almighty, we thank you for the privilege of living in this community. Tonight we come to you with the needs of our city. Lord, the task is difficult at times, the duties are many, responsibilities are great. Give wisdom, ability, and good judgment to those who govern and those who lead us, our council members, all those who serve our city. Give strength to our leaders so they can make God-pleasing decisions and rule wisely. Help them to recognize what is right, give them the courage to confront what is wrong. Keep them encouraged with a sense of satisfaction and accomplishment as they carry out your will in this place. We thank you for all those who lead among us. Make each of us law-abiding citizens who are concerned about the welfare of our community. Use us to be examples of peace and decency. Bless all our families and individuals, young and old, with the security and peace that comes from you. Make our homes places of faith and prayer. We ask this in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Mayor.
Here.
Councilmember Ayers?
Here.
Councilmember Milan?
Here.
Councilmember Moffett?
Here.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Here.
The first item on the agenda is a consideration of approving the following consent agenda items: the minutes of the regular city council meeting from Tuesday, April 3rd, and the minutes of an informal workshop held on April 4th as presented.
May I move the consent agenda be approved as listed?
For.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley? Yes. The motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the discussion -- is that which number we're on? It is. Discussion on an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances regarding the home occupations in the city of Claussen. It looks like Mr. Jim Aldis from our building department submitted to shed some information on this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Sorry I was unprepared at the last council meeting. I was not ready to speak on the massage therapy ordinance. Since that meeting, we've had emails back and forth, I guess there's been discussions back and forth with the individual players, and working on the issues at hand. The document in front of you for a home occupation, there's actually a definition in our ordinance, it's not an actual individual standing ordinance. So the alterations that were -- that came about in that ordinance, I think are sufficient in number one: no article or service shall be sold or offered for sale on the premises except such articles or services produced by that permitted home occupation. And then we added a line, except it starts off with exception, which is an exception of an exception. So it should say including instead of except. I didn't get a chance to bring that to Mike's attention. And that addresses the massage ordinance, section 18-152, number two of the code. So that's, I find that acceptable. Number four, with this existing definition, leaves it vague, and we started tightening up the vagueness of what normal residential traffic is, as not to be a nuisance by causing parking issues or surrounding neighbors. Realize that when we're coming together, putting these definitions and ordinances together, we've got three different points of view. We've got the legal point of view, we've got the planning point of view, and then you've got the enforcement point of view. Sometimes we're all going to be on the same, sometimes we're going to have different opinions on everything. I find this actual addition to be sufficient. I would assume planning wants more defined of what a residential use is, how many people coming, what time's night, you know, other than traffic. Legal, I don't know what their opinion would be, whether to tighten it up or leave it vague so we can interpret it in the future. Number six was a problem in this definition that doesn't pertain to the massage ordinance. It seems to be part of the ordinance that I had talked to you about before, that the ordinance used to allow home occupations as hair salons and beauty parlors and different businesses. And through the years, it's been changed and tweaked for the new ordinances and the new districts around the city center to readapt the houses in the city center to allow for businesses and tea houses and stuff. So number six in this document in front of you has been deleted in its entirety. That actual section of the definition needs to be reworked and probably changed into like three or four different sections. So at this time, with the massage ordinance being in front of you, this document was changed to address the massage ordinance. I don't know if this definition is actually going to have to change in the future, and that'll be brought up a little bit later with the, whether if we want to proceed with adopting the massage ordinance at this time, knowing that the home occupation ordinance still has to be tweaked because of other reasons in the future. This document added number seven and eight, which allows for the massage therapy in residential homes and other internet-based services in residential homes. So at this time, I don't have a problem with changing the definition of a home occupation to this one, except changing except to including, and working on it in the future for different items, if that's what the, I'd probably want legal counsel's opinion and planner's opinion on this also.
Okay. Step away.
So just, for clarity, I'm sorry, I have questions, of course. Just, are we changing this, this is the definition, are we changing it to establish an ordinance?
We're changing it because we're addressing therapeutic massage as a legitimate business. Massage was always thought of as an adult business, and that's what our definitions addressed it as and didn't have it as a home occupation. We're addressing therapeutic massage in a home setting as a legitimate business, so that's why this is being tweaked.
So is this definition just as it pertains to therapeutic massage, or I just, I'm confused about why daycare centers are crossed off from the definition of a home occupation, and then with no articles shall be sold except for the ones made, like, I love Avon. Avon's not made in anyone's home, now I'll make sure that that's still something that could happen and falls within the definition.
Well, daycare centers are allowed by state law, and we do have daycare centers in the city. I don't believe we have any tea rooms, but we'd allow coffee houses in the surrounding businesses in the DDA, the old CMD-2 district. Veterinarian offices and animal hospitals, I don't know if we want those in our residential districts. Tourist homes, as you pointed out, we do have one bed and breakfast, and we're currently licensing those as rental homes. This entire section was removed because some of them are approved, some of them we don't want, so it was, it was actually taking them out and calling them that they weren't home occupations, and they could be defined as home businesses, which is another, a different definition, which is a problem here also. So removing that section was the simplest answer, and then addressing those individual issues that you're talking about at a later date would be a--
So do we have an ordinance that addresses home businesses specifically that, that--
It's just, it's just a definition. There is no ordinance.
Ah, okay.
The reason it was stricken was mainly just for discussion, that we would like to rework it. So that was the intent, was to strike it, as Jim had stated, is that we work on it.
So this is like your first draft?
Correct. This is just a discussion draft, this is not, there's no first reading, this is just to say where are we at with some of the discussion items.
Okay. Thank you.
And I might suggest, under point one, that instead of saying including, it might make more sense to say and except for those mentioned, if that makes sense.
I'll let it up to the wordsmiths to handle that. So I do have some thoughts on it as well, as you might have guessed. The current definition, and again, it's a definition, right, and so I start from the promise that the definition is just that, and then if you want to have standards for home occupations, you put those in your use standards within the zoning ordinance separately where you allow it. So the way the zoning ordinance or the zoning article, the land development regulations works, is that each district either lists home occupation as an allowed use or it doesn't. And right now, residential districts, the single-family residential districts list it as a use that's permitted by right. That's somewhat unusual in my experience, a lot of communities have it as a special land use, so that you've got to come before the planning commission if you want to do it, but that's how yours does it currently. There is also, as Jim pointed out, a definition in the ordinance of a home-based business, and those are allowed in CMD-2, city center, and they would be allowed in the central mixed district if we zone any land to that district in the future. The two things, in planning, the two concepts have generally accepted meanings. Home occupation tends to be similar to what is defined here in the sense that you can't have any employees working as part of that activity, that it can only be resident members of the household that engage in that. Home business, the generally distinct thing about that is that you could have employees there. And so I think when the downtown districts were done, that was the idea, but home occupation, as I recall, was not even included. So there's some, there's some fixing up in a number of different areas of the ordinance that should be done here and then further. If you were to search the city code right now, the whole city code, for massage, you would find it in one place, which is the definition of therapeutic massage in the zoning article, but it's not allowed as a, allowed use anywhere. It, of course, exists as a, as a use in the city in several places currently, and that's been done through analogy because it's viewed as a personal service, similar to hair salons and barber shops and such as that. And so that's why when we looked at the definition of home occupation, we saw that it sought to specifically exclude barber shops and beauty shops. We thought, well, that's going to, you know, by implication exclude therapeutic massage as well. And so that, that needs to be addressed. I think it should be addressed in a way where the definition is just that, it defines the essential characteristics of a home occupation. I think therapeutic massage certainly can be one, it would tend to meet the definition if you're okay with customers coming to the home, you know, and so that becomes the, sort of the slippery slope. Right now, in the ordinance, you have a fairly vague standard, which is that it shall not generate other than normal residential traffic in either amount or type. Well, you know, one could argue that as soon as one customer comes to the home, that's other than normal residential traffic. And so that probably needs a more objective standard, right? If one person at a time is coming to the home, is that a problem? Probably not. You know, if 10 people at a time are coming to the home, that probably is going to be a problem, and you're going to have to, you're not going to want to have that happening, maybe ever, but certainly not if there's not a place for those folks to park. And so I, you know, I think there are some things that could be done, as I say, as use standards for home occupations, to inject some objective criteria into whether or not they're going to be appropriate. If you want to leave them as use as permitted by right, if you want to make them special uses so that each one has to be reviewed, then that could be left up to the discretion of the planning commission, but that's not the way it's set up right now. And so if you want to leave it as set up right now, you really want to have objective criteria so that whoever's considering, and remember, they don't have to really come before anyone, other than the, potentially the building official in terms of a modification for their certificate of occupancy for the home. They don't really have to come before anyone to be reviewed. And so you want to have very objective criteria in there, I think, so that you know whether or not someone is behaving consistently with that or not. So there's, you know, and that's easily accomplished as long as you give us, give us guidance on what you're okay with, right? As I say, are you okay with customer traffic? Are you okay with that up to what level? Would you be okay with employees or not? As Councilmember Moffett points out, do you, is it okay if you sell items out of your home that you don't make at your home? Because right now, it is, it is not. So if you give us the ground rules, we can, we can fix the ordinance so that, you know, so that it will be consistent with that. Given that this piece of this puzzle is part of the zoning ordinance, or the zoning article in the land development regulations, it's going to have to go through the planning commission path first, and public hearing there, and then up to council in order to be amended. And so we should do, anytime we go into the zoning ordinance and start doing things, we would like to fix as much as we can, because it's a, it's a complex process, and so we should try to do that. I don't think it needs to hold up your massage ordinance, we can talk about that some more when, when we get to that particular ordinance, but, you know, I think the massage ordinance is drafted right now, massage registration ordinance says that if it's okay to do it as a home occupation, you can do it as a home occupation. That's a, that's an exception from having to register is really the only effect of that. Happy to answer any questions you have for me.
Can, would the, more specifics regarding parking and traffic, if we borrowed what we put for the downtown business district area, business homes, is that, some of that apply here? Could we just kind of borrow some of that verbiage and place it in here?
Well, I think that downtown is different in that you have public parking available, right? I mean, you do in the neighborhoods too, it's on the street.
I'm talking specifically those, those homes on those side streets that we were allowing businesses, and we said what, how much traffic they were allowed?
Well, what, what we required of them, as I recall, it's been a little while since I looked at it, is that they had to have off-street parking, and that was a concern, right? Because now you're creating a parking lot, you know, potentially butting a residential parcel. And so I don't think, as it relates to home occupation, you want to be forcing people into expanding their parking area, right? Instead, you want to make sure that your number of people coming to the home are going to be consistent with the sort of parking area that they, that they already have, or the amount of off-street parking that they would already have available.
I mean, I don't know of any restrictions we have for parking for something, say like a graduation open house or something like that. And if, if there were somebody who wanted to sell Avon products out of their home and had, you know, 10 folks over to, to have a party of sorts, you know, how do we restrict that? And, you know, is once a month okay? Is every night too much for something like that, right? And we get really, I think it gets really sticky pretty quick. I typically, I typically advocate for more freedom when it comes to usage of personal property in this regard. And I don't want to be too restrictive, but once, once we start employing people outside of the family, I think that crosses a line for me personally.
Well, daycare centers employ, like a home daycare, if you have over X many, right, you can have a helper person? So, so to that end, is it better to leave it as a definition versus traversing into an ordinance? Just, does that make it less restrictive if we just leave it as a definition versus creating new ordinances, or?
I think we're being forced to change the definition because of the massage ordinance.
I get that, but if we just leave it as a definition versus creating, making it into an ordinance?
Well, you know, I mean, that's just structure, right? You tend to want to have the rules in, other than in the definitions, right?
So if we're going to tweak it and make it official?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, do it right, but, you know, back to the, back to the daycare, as Jim pointed out, so there's different levels of daycare. There's family daycare, which is allow, doing these terms by memory, but up to six is allowed by, by right, you must allow it wherever residential use is allowed. And then six to 12, or seven to 12, I guess it is. You have to allow, you can treat it as a special land use, but the criteria are set forth in the statute, so basically you have to allow that. Once you get beyond 12, then most places, and I think you do too, you would allow it in a neighborhood, but it'd be a special land use, like a church or a school would be, and so then it gets site plan reviewed because it's a bigger activity, and it does have off-street parking.
So 12 would require an additional employee, and that's permissible, right? So that's--
More than 12 would require you to get special land use approval and go through site plan.
So between six and 12?
Six and 12 you can do, if you meet the state's criteria.
He's talking land use, we're talking staff.
I know, right.
Difference.
But that becomes an employee which falls under here because it's still a residential, right?
The state definition of those two daycare facilities are actually in our definition ordinance separate from this home occupation.
In the business one, or?
It's in our definition section, and it basically mirrors the state law on those.
So that's what, okay.
So you could, I mean, you could potentially end up with a situation where there would be an employee in a home, but that would be limited to that situation, you know, because the state has preempted your ability to zone that out.
You know, and I guess I just want to make sure, you know, I hate to say women traditionally, but women traditionally have had home businesses, you know, Mary Kay, Avon, a host of other, now they have these little sign parties. And I don't want us to put anything out there that would restrict individuals to be able to do that, because they can do that now, and we aren't concerned about their parking currently, you know, it's just one of those things that your neighbor may or may not do, and I don't know that we ever have any complaints regarding that. I just want to make sure we don't restrict and put a whole lot of onerous steps.
Right, it just stood out with me with the number one, saying that you can only, that you make yourself. I mean, obviously, all those things you named are stuff that no one's making themselves, so.
I'm actually fine with restrictions. I would like to restrict a massage person next door to me, across the street from me, not because I think that person's going to be inherently wrong, but traditionally, it's just not a good, I work in a, I can't even talk about that. I just have personal experience where massage therapists provide extra services, and I, we're a family-friendly community, I don't want to watch people walking out of some guy's house, or woman's house, or guy's house, whatever, I just don't want it. I don't think it's family-friendly. I don't think there's the, think about the hours, most of the hours are going to be evening hours, not daytime. Daycare people, you have a big drop-off first thing in the morning, you have a big pickup at the end of the day, maybe three or four cars, they're in and out in five minutes, because no daycare lady wants to stand and talk to you, they want your kid out of there, and they want you to go home so they can have peace and quiet. So different situation, kind of, but if we had this type of a approval, is there anything that would restrict us from having an interview with a potential candidate? I think that might be one way to just kind of ease the process.
I think the licensing, they're required to still submit their licensing to the building department so that it's on file, correct?
So that's, that's the next ordinance, but we might as well talk about that a little bit in this context. So what the massage ordinance does is causes, so causes folks who want to engage in therapeutic massage, some of them at least, to register. That's all it does, because the state licenses them now, right? You can't license them by statute, you can't. But, and you used to, before the state did that. So what we're requiring and what some communities do, because there are sort of inherent problems with, with this use sometimes, is to cause them to register. Now, all businesses have to register to begin, they have to get initial merchants license from the city if they want to be a business in the city. This is requiring a further level of registration, and what it's intended to do is to require each and every person who's engaging in the activity of therapeutic massage to have their state license on file with the city so that we know that their property licensed to, to do that. You know, right now, as it's drafted, I think it's intended to exempt folks who would be doing it as a home occupation from having to register, right? And so, no, if, as it's drafted right now, that person would not have to present their license and register if they were doing it as a home occupation.
I misunderstand, I mean, if that's true, then I don't understand--
No, the, the one that you're seeing before you is a suggestion and/or what was brought up. They're tied together with home occupation, that's why it's highlighted, because is that something that you want to include?
Right.
Because the original one excluded it, and now, because at the last council meeting, it seemed like that's where some of the discussion came up. So we added those items, do you want to add home occupation as a requirement, if you're going to have it in your home, that you have to be licensed with the city?
And so it says that in the massage therapy ordinance, we need to define it--
Correct. So they're kind of tie-bird to each other.
So, so what would happen is if we adopted these suggestions, is that anybody who wants to operate as a massage therapist in their home, as a home occupation, would have to register with the city, they would be, they would fall under the guidelines of this home occupation ordinance, and in addition, they would also still have to adhere to the massage therapy ordinances as well. And that includes registering with the city.
No, it's drafted right now.
Not the one that yours, I--
So--
Are we looking at the same one?
Under 1852 exceptions, right now, person number two is persons licensed by the Massage Board of Massage Therapy under the Act who may operate as a home occupation as permitted under the code is an exception. So as it's drafted right now, if you were a home occupation, you would not have to register under the registration ordinance that you're considering.
No, I put that under there because I wasn't sure where you wanted to go with that. So that, again, that's not in the first reading, that wasn't in the first reading, that was, where, where again is, where do you guys want to go with the home occupation issue?
So if we were to take-- I'd like them to have to submit their license to the city, and I think that prevents some of the concerns that Pollan may have, because if they have a state licensed, like, state license, and it's registered, then at least we know who and what, and if they haven't done that and there's a complaint from somebody across the street, then we can track it down easier.
So we would take it out of this 1852 as an exemption and fold it into the definitions of saying that if you were going to do it in your home, you still had to register with the city?
If you didn't have it as an exception, if you engaged it in anywhere, you know, other than those places that are exceptions, you would have to register.
Oh, okay, so--
The, the original ordinance had the home occupation as an exemption from registration. Some of my suggested wording, it came out that we want every massage therapy to be, apply for initial, well, business license instead of merchant's license, so we'd have a track of everybody. But, so there's, there's a section that says they don't have to register, they're exempt, and then in the registration section, it says they have to--
And then in the registration section, it says they have to apply for initial merchant license. So it could be doublespeak. It could be a, a registration of the business license and then they don't have to follow the registration of, or the applying for the business license, but don't have to apply for the registration under the massage ordinance application. It's a catch-22. It's, it's whether you want it in there or not. If you want everybody on the same page, everybody registered, realize we're, we're only registering legitimate businesses. Illegitimate businesses are not going to fill out any paperwork.
Right, right. So I, I think there's a few things. We need to instruct, I think all the ordinances need to align, right? So we don't have any doublespeak or contradictions. So I think what we need to do is provide guidance on which direction to go with that. I actually, like the council member, I, I don't have a problem with saying no massage therapists allowed in residential neighborhoods. I feel like that is a little bit of a step backwards to, to be there. And it's unfortunate, but that occupation has just some, some very unfortunate, you know, history. So, you know, I, I don't actually have a problem with restricting it in residential areas altogether. But if we do allow it, I do, I would like to see them register, just like any massage therapist. I would like to see all massage therapists, regardless of where they operate, to register with the city. That'd be my.
I'm not in favor of restricting it, but I would be in favor of if you want to engage in the business of massage therapy, wherever in the city you're doing it, you need to register.
I would agree with that concept that, just because I, I know, I'll say young ladies, well, and young men, that have gone to school for this particular field. And it's cost them a lot of money and it's a professional business. And I know that a lot of doctor's offices are encouraging people to use that as therapy as well. So I do not want to restrict it, but I want everybody to be registered so we know who they are. And then if there's a problem, then at least we have them registered. And if there's a problem and they haven't registered, then we can address it accordingly and find if need be.
And it gives us the tools. And to the extent that they're registered but not operating within the guidelines that the state sets, then there's, you know, those kinds of, what's the word I'm looking for? Avenues to pursue that problem, to correct it.
Because I guess, and probably best for you to explain. So my husband had knee surgery. And so his doctor says that he wants a therapist to come to our house to do that. Is there any problem with me asking a therapist to come to my house? Because now she's providing that service in my home or her. I mean, I'm just wondering, is, how is this tied, is this have any bearing on this?
That is one of the other exceptions in the ordinances because they're working under your, your doctor's jurisdiction. Just like how there's also massage allowed in hair salons because that's allowed by state law also.
So state laws addressing a lot of that.
I'll share with you the problem that I've had. I've had it in a number of communities where I've worked. It's that you, what you will tend to, I mean, there's a couple, couple pitfalls here. What tends to happen sometimes when folks are not intending to engage in therapeutic massage is that they will have one individual who has a license, and that will be the front person. And that person will come in and register, but that won't be the person working in the facility. And so the question becomes, you know, are, how do we, how do we rectify that problem if that's what's going to occur? And then the other, I mean, the other just practical issue, and it's been, it's been attempted to be addressed in, in 18154.5, but there's some inconsistent language in paragraph three of that same section, is that most of these businesses, I had some as clients in the past, and they don't tend to have employees. You know, it's very similar to the way a lot of hair salons work now is that there's independent contractors who kind of rent space in there and apply their trade. And so you want to have all those people registered as well. And so you want to dispense with the word employee in here and make sure you're, you're registering everybody who's going to be engaging in the, in the practice of therapeutic massage at any given location and put somebody, make somebody responsible for that who is the proprietor of that location.
And that language was put in there, if I'm not mistaken, when I read it. It was in there regarding that every single person had, had to be licensed. It was not per business, it was per individual.
Right, it's added in five, but then up in three, it says, supply a copy of their employees' valid massage therapy license. And so we want to get rid of that term employees from there, I think.
Got you.
But, you know, I don't have a good, a good answer for the first problem that I identify, you know, the kind of the front person using their license to get in the door, other than, you know, there, there needs to be monitoring that goes on.
Paul, any, any, any monitoring, without, within the city, I mean, our, the vending machines that we monitor, that's a stop by whichever city official is to monitor that. And when we have one license on file and you walk in and there's three people working, that's a problem.
Right, well, how do you monitor someone's home business? Because I'm assuming a home business such as this, which is a pretty lucrative business. If you have a really good business, get a storefront. You can operate, you can still make money and not annoy your neighbors. But how do, how would you? You can't just like knock on someone's door and go, hey, you guys working today? You know, you have any clients? Let me see your, let me see who's, you know what I mean? You can't do that. It's their home for one thing.
You could go, and what prohibits you from doing that?
Well, I'm sure they're not going to be like, I provide massage services from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. They're not going to be advertised like that. It'll be more of a, a loose thing, like, you know, you call your hair person and you say, are you free at 4:00, whatever? And then, okay, I have an assignment at 4:00. And I'm not saying this isn't a valid business for a lot of people. It probably is. It's probably a great business for stay-at-home moms or, I don't know, people who just don't like driving to work every day. It would be great, but at the same time, I'd like to see the neighborhoods remain neighborhoods as much as possible and not be thoroughfares. It's, it's hard enough to park on most streets around here any given day. And just the whole people coming back and the, the fact that it, it is a subject that can go awry. I just think you just turn away from it in the neighborhood. Outside of the neighborhoods and business districts, I don't have a problem with it as much, as long as it's regulated.
Madam Mayor, if I might, Mr. Kingsup, you've been pretty quiet here. I'd value your opinion, but at the same time, enforcement on private property like that, does that become an issue? Searching a property?
In, in this context, it would be very rare because we haven't had the experience. But I can tell you, we have had that experience before. And the monitoring comes about through neighbors or observations by police or building. And that generally begins the process of looking at those businesses operating out of a home and beginning to talk to them about restricting that activity and minimizing the activity. So we have had that experience. In, in, in this case, there are a couple of ways monitoring comes about. Rarely, it would be next-door neighbor who might say, let's say, there's a massage going on, and might say, you know, there are a lot of cars that keep on going up there daily. This happened in Troy, as you may know, where suddenly one residence was getting a tremendous amount of activity. Finally, the police busted it and it was a prostitution operation with massage and other ingredients. And, and so it, it eventually came to a detection. And that's how those will arise. Well, you want to try to prevent that here. And the best way you can prevent that is by making the limitation of massage in a home to the licensed person and not a surrogate or whatever. And, and then in the application process or registration of that business, fill in some questions there that might go into the detail of is, there's only one person that's doing that. That's you and no other person. And what are your hours and so forth? So you get that information. There's been a good conversation about the changes and I think that, and, and the issues. And I think that does require further discussion where we can come back with something. I think the suggestions in the massage ordinance are enough to say, in my opinion, that there are substantive changes. So you can't go into a second reading. That's it, period. So, so if there are other changes that come back, you do an action of rescinding the previous reading and then going into the discussion on the reading of the, of the new ordinance. But I think everyone has identified the thorny issues. And you can only control them as best as you can in language. That's one way. Where it's enough to give enforcement the weapon to go in. So it's language in the ordinance. It may be vague, but it's, it's there to exercise. Monitoring by third parties or outright activity that appears egregious and, and creates the issue itself. So there's enough there to make the modifications that gives administration and law enforcement the authority to enforce the ordinance. The second issue is whether, and it was raised by Greg, whether the home occupation should be a separate ordinance and not in a definition where you maybe embellish things that are more. For instance, yes, there are a lot of home occupations out of the homes that have been mentioned that are not troublesome. But I'm thinking in this day and age and with the internet and sales, it may go beyond that. For instance, if I'm, if I'm in a home and I'm retired, because I'm no longer the Clausen City Attorney and I have nothing to do, and I'm a craftsman, and I go on the internet and begin to advertise this really cool product that I can make myself, and I have a large garage where I can store everything, then I have a volume business that delivery trucks are constantly coming, that there's movement of traffic at my house and so forth. And, and that type of activity can come into play. And I think you want to look at that as well. And in, in ordinance where you're governing home occupation, you might be able to expand on the implications of that and how you want to regulate that, that you can't necessarily do now in the ordinance and the text as it is, even with the, with the amendments. But you can, in that ordinance, begin to specify real limitations that calls attention to activity for the administration to act on a show cause hearing. So that's, that's how I look at this right now with this discussion.
But then, this kind of a business would probably be the equivalent of having a tenant who doesn't pay and it would turn into one of those really long nightmare things to get someone out or at least to make them cease and desist the business. You guys know what I mean? That constant loophole that just goes on forever and ever and you feel like you're going to lose in the end?
Well, yeah, that's a good observation, and I think we have to be proactive in that regard. And, and as long as you have a legitimate basis in your ordinance for taking the more extensive action that you want to take, like a show cause hearing to set the business down, that's fine. That's fine. Due process is there, notice is there, fair hearing, and you've got the momentum going forward. You can't stop it right away until you go through show cause hearing, but you can at least begin to get the attention. And that attention begins to permeate into other home occupations that are in the community too as well. So the message is sent out that you have control over the process, you have limitations.
And we could sit here and come up with examples and anecdotes all day long, right? I mean, my, my sister and her husband, they actually made, they, they sewed like ties and diaper covers for babies and quit their full-time jobs and were selling these things on Etsy for a good, long while. You know, something like that, is that something we want to restrict, right? I mean, that's the kind of thing that we're looking at. And it gets, it's different, but I mean, it's different, but it's not, right? I mean, how, and we can come up with 100 examples like that, just sitting here thinking about it, so.
Well, that's true, but they're all within a certain category. It's an expanded type of business activity, uses internet, uses mail service to, to advertise, whatever. But it generates a lot of activity.
Because I think the tawdry business that we're concerned about, they're going to, our ordinance or our definition is going to be irrelevant to them.
It will, it will be.
Right. So, so I don't know that our, our language in this will prevent or encourage the problem that Paul, that Councilwoman Paula's worried about.
It, it, it might based on the application requirements that come into play. If you have a separate ordinance along those lines, I'm talking about a home occupation type thing. You're never going to be able to prevent it because the criminal mind can get around anything. What you want to do is be sure you have the mechanism there for detection as quickly as you possibly can so you can then take action. That's what you want, the ability to detect and the ability to act.
Right.
I hate to say, and there's already, let's see, a penalty phase to this if they aren't following this and there's something in place. Because I'm worried, if you didn't have it defined at all, then how do you, if they're doing this and they have extra employees, you go, well, you may have a license, but you're failing in this regard. You may be doing this, you may have a license, but you're not following these other things. So it gives us a little bit of control.
Right. Like, like he said, if, so if someone complains, there's people coming and going. Well, do you have a license filed with the city to do massage therapy? You know, no, you don't. Well, that's something to act on. I mean, by setting the parameters, then anything that falls outside of the parameters can be red flags to go ahead and act on and nip in the bud.
But I agree, so.
So we need to.
So administration has enough information to re-craft this?
I think so. And it's our obligation, based on the discussions, to get together and collectively come up with a common understanding on what you want and what we want to do.
Okay, so be it. I don't think anybody's going anywhere because we have our next ordinance to discuss, which I believe. So we could take care of six and seven together. And now we're on eight regarding the mobile food truck vending services.
So this, this has been changed a little bit since I last saw it. I did look at it today. Remember that the way this was drafted was to have a map go with it, right? That would have, that would have demonstrated the places on public property where you were going to allow mobile food vending pursuant to a permit. And now it's, it's changed and it refers to that map addressing both public and private property. I do think that's a little bit problematic because you can't pick winners and losers with respect to private property. I think the way we had it before was that if it was allowed use in that zoning district, which is not in any right now, so the ordinance would have to be amended to provide for that, and there was appropriate place for them to park on any given site that they could do it with a permit. Yeah, I, I think that's the way to do that as opposed, I think the map is really for the use of public property. So I would suggest going back to that. The, I saw that there's discussion again about alcoholic beverages being invented. I, I remember when I was here the first time, or the only time I've been here on this, I guess, and Mike Lang was here. We had our little give and take on the subject. That was a big issue for him, I remember. It was, that was his one main thing was that he didn't want anybody selling alcoholic beverages. I, I'm not sure the degree to which that's even possible, though I do see the mobile pub going by sometimes when I'm downtown Ann Arbor. And so it must be possible, I guess, but it doesn't, I'm not, I'm not sure what a great idea it is. Anyway, I just point that out to say that previously, we had kind of told the public that was assembled at least that day that that was not our intention, was to provide for the sale of alcoholic beverages through mobile food vending. So, you know, I, I just point that out. I don't have an issue with that. I don't have an issue with it either way. You know, I, I think that next steps, at the point where you're comfortable with it, are to develop the map and just, and just decide, and it may be that you only want it in the, in the public parks, and if that is your position, then I think we could dispense with the map, because the map is intended to define other places, either in public parking areas or on public streets where it would be allowed. And so if you're, you're limiting it to parks, then I don't know that you even need the map, and we could go through and call out the references to the map from the ordinance, if that's the direction that you're going, so you could allow it. On private property, if the ordinance is amended to provide for that in certain zoning districts where there's a legitimate place to park, where one place that asks virtually every month whether that's okay, which is Mark Coney's not open pizza restaurant, but that was one with the big food truck in the back, and we've told them that that is not currently allowed, but that would be allowed than anywhere where it was a legitimate land use, you know, basically at commercial districts if they had a place to park the truck.
Greg, what's wrong with, you know, just having it at the park, and as well as a special, say, we have an event downtown or something like that, we want to put one of the food trucks down to the other end of town or something like that?
Yeah, if that's the way you want to, if that's the way you want to go, you have your special event, ordinance coming up next, and so if there were a special event, it could be part of the special event, or otherwise, on a day-to-day basis, it's allowed at the parks. You know, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, if that's your, if that's the policy you want to pursue. I think there are other places where they could operate legitimately in the, in the city, and I think those could be mapped out if you're interested in that, but you don't have to be, and if you're not, then I don't think you need the map.
But what other places would you, do you?
So, you know, as I, as I've thought about it and, and wondered where they could, could park, you know, I, I know there's a perimeter around the public parking lots, which is, which meets these distance criteria. When we, when I wrote this, I put a distance criteria in, and I used as a, as a guide for that, allowing them all the way at the backside of the public parking lots, but not any closer than that to the existing businesses downtown. And so, again, that would not be true if you didn't include those areas on your map, but, and again, I, of course, as you know, I use Traverse City as an example for this, and so they, they likewise have identified areas kind of on the periphery of downtown where food trucks can park, and excluded them from the core of downtown. And so that is something that you could do as well, if you're interested in that. You, you would shade those areas on your map that you developed, and then one would be able to come in and get a permit to park in any of those shaded areas. And again, those permits would tend to be more expensive, because you're using public land to, you know, conduct your business, and supposed to compensate for the fact that they're not paying property taxes. You know, relatively more expensive permits than the use of private property, which is already taxed. Anyway, I, I think there are places like that that, that could be developed and that you could review as part of a map if you're interested, but if you're only interested in the parks, I don't know that you necessarily need that.
I have a, and it may just be a layman's question. When I was reading the food truck ordinance, as well as the special event ordinance, is the, what makes it a food vending truck that they're selling items? So if I am having a graduation party and want to bring a food truck to my party, am I now having to apply for a special event permit? And will this food truck or pizza truck be required to then be licensed by the city in order to come to my graduation party at my house?
Yeah, so we had never drafted it, I, I don't think, to allow food trucks on private property outside of commercial areas under the mobile food vending ordinance. That wasn't our intent.
You know, that's a big thing these days, right?
Apparently, we don't.
You've got to consider Traverse City, we're not Traverse City.
Right, but I was just going to say, they have the most liberal one I've ever seen, and what theirs says is, you could do it anywhere on private property, as long as you get a permit. Well, I don't think any, you know, as I talked to their city attorney, she didn't think very many people did choose to do that, but in theory, because there's no market there, right? But in theory, you could on private property.
But I would have to get a, I'd have to come over here and get a permit.
You have to get...
So if I was, so if I was going to, in June, have a graduation party, and I went, gosh, I'd like to have a little hot dog cart with somebody that's servicing me to do that, or this really cool brick oven pizza that they now bring around.
That's a big truck, I have to say.
No, they like pull it behind them in a little trailer. I wouldn't know that I need to come over here and get a special permit, and if it's my home party, and again, it's my home, I don't know that I should have to get a permit for that, or have required the vendor that is being invited to my home to have had to have gone through the city and pay a licensing fee for my one-time graduation event.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think it's addressed right now, but I think it could be addressed simply by making the distinction that you're not selling, you're not selling, number one.
Correct.
Oh, that's a valid...
Right, that's why I started with that. I think you need to find...
And you're certainly not selling to the public.
Define that vending food truck, because if they are not selling to individuals, I mean, they're selling to me as a homeowner.
That almost falls into a catering scenario.
Correct.
Right, that's right.
And I, I was just concerned when I would read those two items, that I don't know that this has been addressed, and we probably need to clarify that.
Right, I think that's right.
I have questions that arise from that. I didn't know that, that is a trend now.
Yes.
And I think, Mike personally, I need to get more information on how expansive that trend is, because I immediately started thinking about, okay, noise in the neighborhood, advanced notification to your neighbors, how you monitor any, any noise, how you monitor any disruption. Those things come to my mind.
But that's the same, I hate to say every graduation party, you have those same concerns, and usually your neighbors are invited so that there's no angst later on.
I understand that, yeah, having gone through a bunch, but I understand that, but, but this is an attraction that really is on the upswing now, and so it has more appeal.
And even these kids' parties, they're now doing those, those trailers that come in with, and, boys and girls, but they're arcade games, and they drive up, and it's a big party in a box. My daughter was approaching somebody that's doing something very similar, specific to little girls, and party in a box, and it's going to, it's going to really take off. So I think you're going to have semi-trucks driving down and parking in front of people's houses and providing events, and may or may not include food.
Well, that's good information.
What kind of, for, for Mike and Mark, what kind of questions have come into the city in regard to food truck vendors? Like, what are, what are they looking to be able to do, or?
The biggest one that we get a call on every year is hot dog vendors, and they want to be in the DDA or at a park. Every year, we get one or two calls about hot dog vendors. It doesn't matter which year, they always want to, can they, are they permitted? They ask where they can be, and we say, it's not permitted. So that's basically every year, we have to turn away, you know, people who want to, I think one of the, is it the firefighters or someone, one of the people I think has his own, I can't remember who it is.
The Custers?
Yeah, does the stuff for the Fourth of July and things. I think he, he's called a couple times and asked where he could set up shop, in essence, and at what time, regulations, so that's kind of where we've been. So, yeah, we want to try and be proactive and talk about this, so it's good that you brought up these other items, because I didn't even think about, you know, homeowners having parties. I forgot, I know that events, even Kona Ice and other places have come up.
As I say, Kona Ice comes on a regular basis.
So how do we, so we could add an exception in there where we talk about that, and that's why we want to have this, this discussion, because we want to see where you guys are at, and then we can add that.
And I assume that our new semi-professional soccer group is planning on using trucks over there as well at the park.
That's what they stated, yes.
And so that's something that we need to make sure.
And I, I also know that Andrea mentioned school events as well, and how is that regulated? And I know that that would take a hit to some of their things, and then that goes back to the public.
I did like that idea that it donates back to the charitable organizations, so they have to pay.
And you're also going to look at, yes, but how many people bring in these, John, you're talking about noise and stuff, how many people bring in these big bounce houses?
Yeah, right.
You know, I hear the generators running, although we've been hearing it for the last two days, but I mean, this is like in the summertime.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't be Big Brother on everything, you know?
That's true. No, that's absolutely true. And, and you need to give some flexibility to the family or neighborhood that's going to do that, so they don't feel burdened by administration and rules and regulations. So, but this is a good discussion, and it's a, it's an awareness that makes us sort of begin to think, okay, how do we build in the flexibility? And what are the circumstances that, that trigger it or don't trigger it?
You know, even when you bring up the block party idea, well, block party's a special use, and so they'd need a special permit, and you'd come here and discuss that and make arrangements for that. And so let's say you're going to bring in a food truck that is going to charge people, is that food truck going to be required to have a Claussen license? Or can you say, gosh, there was this really cool thing in Ann Arbor, and I'd like to bring them to our party? And so there's an exception somehow, because it's a homeowner that's sponsoring them for, you know, or the block that's sponsoring them for a specific event that is not in your downtown area, but what if you have a home, a block party that's close to the DDA?
Sure, sure.
So, anyway.
Sure. And I, I still, I still have, I still think these fees are really high. I have a couple, one, I guess I wonder what the purpose of a fee is here, and two, I mean, if our, if we are charging this fee of $800 to vend on city property, for, for instance, at the park, I, I'm pretty certain that we will see no activity on this front. $800 is probably prohibitive for somebody who wants to set up a hot dog stand in Claussen Park twice a year. That, that's only my guess, I, I don't have a crystal ball, but, and then the, the $50 fee, which will be donated to the athletic boosters, that's great, I don't mind supporting the boosters, but again, I just wonder what the purpose there is. And what I wouldn't mind seeing is maybe a per instance fee, up to $800 total for the year, or something along those lines. I would, I would prefer to see that.
That might be better, but again, you need some rational rationale behind how that escalates, you know, what, what triggers that upward movement? The limitation is good, and the variety of amounts is patently fair, as long as you describe why that fee is set for that. So it, it, it is a measure that sort of balances out to the city.
And then, it says no fee, this is one of the proposals here, no fee shall be charged to an honorably discharged veteran of the United States military. You know, what if somebody is an active member of the military? You know, I, I don't know, and how far do we go with that? Does that?
That's why it's highlighted.
Right, is that, is that a legal concern?
Those are business decisions. Planning, lawyers, don't get involved in.
To that, and I think that person should be verifiable as the owner versus just the person coming in with a permit, and I agree that anyone on, what do they call that, National, the Guard or whatever, so anyone, right, right, even National Guard, anyone serving in any capacity would be.
The reserves, yeah. Any honorable military membership, I think, for a better word.
But it needs to be, we need to be able to establish that they're the owner.
Active member, and?
Yeah.
I highlighted it, because I know it was discussion from last time you guys were wondering about that.
There was another, that, in one, on the application, it says that the license is from one year from the date it's issued, and then in the code, I believe, it says that they expire December 31st of the year that they're issued.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So there was a conflict there.
Yeah, that's right.
I was questioning why we were asking if they have a fryer, griddle, a broiler, and a grill.
We, Suzie and I had discussed that as well, and we, we weren't, I highlighted, I don't know if I re highlighted.
It is highlighted, yeah.
Only because we weren't sure if that was a requirement for Oakland County standards, so we left it, we wanted to try, we didn't reach out to them yet to see what their license is, or even for a fire marshal, if he wanted to know if that was how they were getting or utilizing their food vending cart.
So would that be a criteria used to approve or deny, or is it just informational?
That's just for information, just for a fire marshal and everyone to know what they're actually utilizing on their cart or unit. I mean, in regards to the alcohol, it's an interesting thing that I wanted to discuss is because I have a affair that comes to the church in my backyard. Say, for instance, you want to have a carnival, they have a beer trailer where they have three kegs, so is that a mobile vending? That's why the alcohol, that's why I left it as a discussion, because is that then considered a mobile vending unit? Because it's an actual trailer, and they have three keg taps, but it's part of the main event, so I didn't know if that was...
Well, how did we handle last year with the CraftCon? Because those, if they were, was there, was there any trucks that were vending? I know they talked about having a truck at one point that would have had the kegs in front or something like that. And one question, we, in the past, have never, with any exception, allowed alcohol at our parks. And so whatever we write, I want to make sure that alcohol vending is allowed, that it's clearly stated that they are not, and not at the city parks, and I'm almost kind of gray on city parking spaces. I mean, I don't know that, oh.
I don't.
We take, we don't have very much parking now, so I'm just, it's to put vending food trucks in our public lots.
That's where the special events, they, again, those are tied, because if you have another Comic-Con and you had a trailer that pulled up, it would be on a public, a lot.
I was thinking just in general on allowing food trucks in the public parking lots for lunchtime. We have parking issues there, I wouldn't want to line up a bunch of food trucks in that space as well.
You can, you can put, you know, time limits on them, on the various spaces that you designate as well. And when, when we did the research on this originally, one of the things we found is that a lot of, a lot of them seek to be in locations like as bars are letting out, because people want to eat before they go home, right? And it's actually kind of a good idea that they stop and eat something before they try to drive home.
And I don't, Washington DC has a big food truck presence at lunchtime around this particular park outside of our office, and any particular trucks essentially rents this locate, their space for a couple hours, then they leave, and the next guy shuffles into his spot, and so they're, they're only in that particular location certain days until only certain times, and they kind of just come and go, so.
I don't, I don't mind seeing food trucks on the perimeter of, of public lots, anywhere, frankly, I don't mind that. I do think it's pretty problematic to try to create a map of private properties that are allowed for this kind of thing, I think you run into some problems there. You know, but there are private properties in the DDA then, where some of this might still fall within guidelines, and, and so then, you know, I don't know that we deal with that at all.
Well, I think if it's a vacant lot, you know, now it becomes a new use to that lot, and if they want to go through site plan review, which would be required for a new use, you know, and create a parking space for a food truck, I guess they could do that, in theory, but you also could provide that it is not a principal use of property. So again, I hate to keep referencing Traverse City, but what Traverse City found was that it did become a principal use of, and it's very popular, by the way, there's the, the original Little Fleet, which has now been, I guess it's Ferndale, has Detroit Fleet referencing the one in Traverse City, but it's a court, and so what they had to do is they had to go back in their ordinance and write a definition of food truck court, and they did allow that as a principal use, but otherwise, food truck is not a principal use of property. And so unless you've got a building on there already, it wouldn't be appropriate to have it, have a food truck parked on that piece of property.
What I'm picturing, and I don't know if, I think this might fall into the guidelines here, is down in the front of the, like the Twi Fit laundromat, right? That's a private property, there's a parking lot out front. I think you could probably find a spot in there that falls outside of 50 feet from any restaurant, I think. I don't know for certain, right? And so how do we, how do we, or do we, you know, look at that or restrict that?
Well, it's intended to allow that, assuming that that's not required... Well, it's intended to allow that, assuming that that's not required parking, right? In that particular location, I don't think they have any parking despair. But if you have extra parking and you have a place on your lot where a vehicle could legitimately park and there's going to be a need for, you know, another space to service it as well, then it's intended to allow that.
Isn't that DDA?
It is.
That's in the DDA zone, right?
It is.
Yeah.
So I mean, and, and that, in that instance then, if we wanted to restrict that, I don't want to restrict that. But if we did want to restrict that, then we would be creating a map of private property that it wouldn't be, wouldn't be an option.
Well, I think you would not make it a permitted use in the city center district if that's what you wanted to, you know, if you wanted to exclude it from that property, it would be fair to exclude it from similarly situated properties.
But you said you don't want to.
I personally, I mean, I'm one of us, but, I mean, I'm, the thing about this is that we can pass a version of this and we can change it if we run into problems, right? You know, sometimes I worry that we spin our wheels a little too much thinking that this is going to be set in stone forever. You know, it is a little bit of an experimentation with food trucks. It's a little bit of a, I mean, I don't want to say it's a new business model. I think this has been around for probably hundreds of years, but I mean, it's probably catching on a little more. And, you know, I, I don't mind seeing it here in the city, but.
So where are we at?
I think there's some information to rewrite it and send it back again.
Yep.
Well, they got to really know what we want.
Right.
Well, I think.
You know, they can rewrite to things four or five times. We're getting nowhere.
What if we were, to Matt's point, you know, do a crawl, walk, run sort of approach to it and rewrite it as skinny down as possible, so maybe only allowing it at the city park. Reduce, you know, maybe even go ahead and remove the alcohol or any of the, the sort of more controversial provisions and just make it as simple as possible to try it for this upcoming summer, if summer ever comes, right? And, and, and see if people are interested, see if they have business, see if trucks are interested in paying whatever we land on the fees being. And then if that has people inquiring more about wanting to expand the use of it and then coming back next year and tweaking it to address those. So have a preliminary skinny down version for the first year.
I want to keep it out of the DDA, keep them out of the DDA altogether. We've, we already had enough, enough businesses complain about it that they don't want them downtown.
My question is about, so we have Marconi's and Woodpile.
Right.
They've, and Woodpile has two food, food trucks with Treat Dreams as well. And I know Marconi's, he is asked if he could put it in there. He's in the DDA, is he not?
Right.
Woodpile's not.
Woodpile's not, I know, but I'm just saying.
Well, you know, Chicken Shack has truck, but they're down, yeah, down the ways.
Marconi hasn't even opened a bloody building.
I know.
Come on.
But he's, he has asked to serve from his truck. He has. He's come in here to ask, so.
So do people, this is stupid, but do people, they own the property, right? So Marconi owns a certain, or are they leasing that?
They're leasing it.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, so who, so Woodpile owns their property though, right?
Yes, I believe so.
So if they're in the DD, what if we were to say if they're in the DDA and they own the property, then they can, then that's permitted use if they have, I mean, I don't know what Woodpile wants to do. They want to park theirs there or they want to be able to?
They've had, wanted to have special events before where they could have it on their property.
And, and they own the property. So, I mean, if they're in the DDA and they own their own property and they want to expand their business to, to invite other businesses.
Again, Woodpile's outside of the DDA, so it doesn't.
Are they?
Yeah.
Woodpile also has no parking.
Right.
They've had, they've had, they've had many events there, Woodpile, believe it or not. They filled the whole parking lot with the rib cook off or what have you, which is fantastic.
Yep.
You know, other than parking in a tavern, it's not cool, right?
So the consensus is that you want it to state chart, no fee shall be charged to an active or honorably discharged. We can keep that in there, you're stating?
Who's an established owner of?
Who's an established owner?
And I, and I like that Claussen citizens, Claussen residents who are in the same.
Yes.
If you're a Claussen resident.
You want it to say resident of Claussen, not of the state?
So Claussen residents would not be charged a fee, is that what we're saying?
I would like that.
Oh, okay.
Are they paying property taxes in other places?
And then remove the alcohol, item C?
Yeah, I would love to see that go away personally.
Alcohol?
Do you want to just focus on public property then or include private?
So we had a list here in the, and I don't know if I'm going to be able to find it quickly, right? But there were like four parks, right?
City Park and?
Grant.
Grant, so those four parks, which I.
So if we.
So you want to name the parks?
City, Hunter, Parkdale, Grant, yeah.
They were.
The other thing in the application, we ask for copy of state photo ID and iChat, which is criminal background. I was thinking of perhaps including E-Verify to determine, right?
So our fee schedule then, we're only allowing it on city property in those parks? Well, I guess, I guess private property is still applicable.
So what's the draw to the truck people then if they can only use city parks? Most of the parks are kind of obscure and unless you live here, you're probably not going to know where three out of five of them are. And then are you going to allow them to do a truck gathering thing where a whole bunch of them show up and then they have this thing? Because it's got to be word of mouth anyways, because what goes on in most of these parks is not enough activity to make it worth any truck to come there, I'm going to guess. If you get a football game or one of those big soccer games or something, that would be nice. They might be able to make a little bit of cash, but you've got to think of it from their standpoint, too. There's got to be something in it for them or you're wasting your time writing an ordinance no one's going to use.
I think we've had a resident speak about how the number of people in the, when it's nice outside are in the parks at lunchtime. I think there's a lot of people in starting businesses. I know when I used to live nearby or work nearby, I lived nearby, when I used to work nearby, the park, we would go there for lunch. And so I think if there's enough.
Visy plates at lunchtime, because I've done that myself. And so I think it would be a destination. People would go there and purchase their lunch and sit at one of the picnic tables and eat their lunch, especially word of mouth and these, you know, the foodies really do follow the trucks and where they go. And so if there's a regular schedule, I think it would take a little bit of time and those, the food trucks actually do a lot of marketing themselves on getting their followings. And people will go all over the place for certain trucks.
And if we reduce the price to make it worth giving it a try, you know, that might attract some people who, like there is a, there's a business that just opened up in the city that has a food truck. I think it's called Salt and Sugar.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, that would be, if I were them, that would be the first easiest place to give it a shot, right? You're right there. You might as well pop over to the park, so.
I, I have a picture of them in the master plan, actually at the park.
So, so, right, so there's.
Farmers Market, I believe.
And the pizza place, I mean, they're right there, would make sense to pop over to the park for a couple hours. So it would be, again, to do the crawl, walk, run, to give it a try and see what kind of interest and get people excited about it and, and then go from there.
I mean, do we, do we change the licensing to kind of in your same concept, it's per event? Maybe you say for these four months, we're only going to charge $250 as a trial and then?
I mean, I would, I mean, if, if they say, you know, we're going to be set up on these dates, it's $50 per instance or whatever, I don't know. I.
Who monitors that though?
That's a good question. I mean, who monitors any of this, but yeah.
But I, I like, I like the idea of, or 250 just till the end of this calendar year. I mean, like I said, whenever it warms up enough to give it a try and be out there, such a small window that it's nice out.
But certainly want to make sure that we include those conditions on, like Farmers Market. You have to have the permission of the Farmers Market people to be there during their event or any of the other events if.
Which isn't a special event, so.
Right, right.
Do you, do you still want to allow it on private property then?
I think we're just not going to address it at this point in time, so it would be.
I mean, it doesn't become effectuated until we make it a use in the zoning ordinance. But in the, in this ordinance, you still want to allow for it on private property if it's allowed use and there's parking available?
Yes.
Let's see where it goes.
Any other questions?
I did have the question about the, the school events. Since they're, they're own, I know that there's a lot of questions about that and a lot of the schools have food truck rallies or events, I believe. And whether or not they're going to be, will they have to register?
That's where back to that whole special events grad party kind of thing.
Okay. So keep that kind of in the back as well? That there, if they have an event and they have a food truck at the school, that's, it's allowed. It's just a permitted.
Yeah, no problem with that. I think Kenwood has a, a deal up there where I noticed they had some of the food trucks there and it seemed to work out all right and, you know.
I'd hate to suppress that.
Yeah, exactly. And we don't want to charge them an arm and a leg. That's ridiculous. They have to go through, through the state and get approved for a special, I can't remember what it is. We have to go through all the time to.
Who's licensed?
We have to get a license from the state.
So in addition to naming the parks, do we name the schools?
But the schools aren't public property.
But they're permitted places. So do we specifically identify those as permitted places?
I know there's no fees assessed to those that are on the school grounds.
So because they're not included, it's allowed?
If it's not, if we don't include it, if we don't specify it, it's disallowed?
Yeah.
So then we need to include the schools as being allowed, yeah.
Schools.
Yeah.
With the permission of school administration, right? We won't, we don't want trucks just pulling up and. Or do we?
As a concern.
No, he's hiding behind Greg. I can't see him.
As a parent who's sat through three hour track meets to watch the kid run for 20 seconds, I, I've always enjoyed having the food trucks at school events and special events like that. Football games or whatever, if, wherever the event is held, marathons, 5Ks, stuff like that. So I don't know if it needs to be regulated at this time.
Well, if we're saying that they're allowed at the park, then it's pretty much they could be there whenever they pull their truck up. So if they're there during a track meet versus, you know.
Well, the question then becomes, I think there's language here that.
Their times are, nine to nine, I believe it was.
Doesn't allow them within a certain area of, what was that, a former? Doesn't, doesn't allow them within a certain distance of a special event? That might have been a former draft of.
Former. I think we changed it to, uh, something, within a block, I believe we stated.
All right, and block is a loose term.
Ten, I think we changed it from block because Suzie and I were stating, what is an actual block?
Exactly.
And I think we still kept it on 50 feet is what we stated.
Okay, so then is a track meet at the stadium a special event, right?
It's a school function and during those times, is the school on the park?
Look at that and put a more word.
During school events.
And let's go for a, a truck to show up at the park any day of the week.
Right.
From July through November when Mavericks are playing or Claussen Trojans are practicing, all of that. So then that kind of opens a slippery slope if we just say there's a, you know, open door policy for any school slash event because then these truck people are going to be smart and go, oh, if I go there, you know, even outside of the event, there's a location, maybe a group of people that I can target. So do you have to be more specific than that?
Also, Mike, I know Suzie talked to you in detail about this ordinance and the, the next one. Was there anything that she brought up that was separate than what we've already discussed?
No, I know that we had looked over the email and we had asked about like what you just stated, Paul, was the sporting events and how would that, you know? Because we, if we're going to have the football club, they're going to, they wanted them. They stated that at the meeting. They intend on having them, like you were stating. So if you're at actual, at Kenwood Elementary, that's fine, is what we're stating right now. But yeah, if we're at the city park, where is that line of where there's an actual football game, which I know might be a hit, I don't know how much, to the booster club? I don't know.
That's a good point.
Granted, I know some people will still do that because they know it's contributing to the boosters. Whereas others, like you were stating, for their three hours, I would probably rather have a taco or whatever it might be than a bag of chips and, you know, it's one of those, those things. So you want to permit it, but yeah, it's like where, that's why I'd ask about the schools because I know that's a big question, I think, in the email exchange we've had.
Well, that could be something the booster clubs or PTA could partner with some of these trucks if it becomes popular because it's hard to man those snack stations anyways, from what I understand, because people like me don't volunteer. But, you know, right, but if they could get a partnership and they get a percentage of something, which they could very well do if they sponsor something out.
$50 for event is paid to the, whatever school charitable organization they choose during those events.
Well, even beyond that, if you, if you promote, if you know you're doing, you know, some football game, soccer event, something, and you promote it to the parents and the people who are going to come, that this truck is going to be here and 10% goes to your organization above and beyond that $50, I bet most organizations would be fine to do that, but it would just be a new opportunity for new partnerships.
The only reason I frown on that is we, we tried the percentage thing at the Fourth of July parade and it's too much, it was, turned out for us to be too much work to police those businesses and keep them honest on really what the profit was at the end of the day to turn back around to give to the, the Fourth of July committee. So they ended up just coming up with a flat fee because it was something they could count on and it was less work and babysitting regarding those businesses. Okay.
Do you have everything you need?
Did I say, do we, have we given you enough or?
I think, Matt, you had stated about garbage and your gray water.
Yes, right.
And we were going to say that the vendor is to be compliant with waste.
Okay, the vendor should not dispose of waste in city receptacles, right? Thank you.
On to the next one.
Nine?
Did we make it?
No, number nine.
Nine, we're on the special event. I thought we kind of bundled them together.
No, no, don't.
Discussion?
So I had a couple of questions about this. So under section five, six dash three, number six, it said no special event permit application for the same time and/or location that has already been granted. I think, I think instead of and/or, it should just be and?
We, sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Suzie and I, we did right before, at about three o'clock today, we discussed some of these things.
Okay.
And that was a cumbersome sentence. So we decided to probably best to strike it and just started at where the occurrence of two or more special events. And then I don't know if you want to have it in a first come, first served model.
Yeah, I agree.
Because you could have someone, you know, where is that slippery slope of someone applied, but they're not yet approved, someone else applies and then say, oh, you really didn't want that event. And then that's the preferential treatment. So you wanted to say it's first come, first served, that's the date.
Right, the date of the application or something like that would rule. And, and it does, I mean, I know we're only 2.2 square miles, but I mean theoretically you could have, you know, two events going on in the city that are in nowhere proximity to each other and who cares if they're not going to be near each other?
We've had that issue, I believe, in the past where someone, a run, had to change a date because they wanted the same weekend for something.
Well, I could see if they're both at the park, but if one's at, I don't know, you know.
Hunter.
Hunter and, yeah, one's at the park, who cares, right? They're mutually exclusive, right? And then the other concern I had about number seven, it, it just seemed really vague. And if we're going to say, you know, police or police and city attorney, to the satisfaction of the police and city of attorney, the, so the whole sentence is the permit is, shall establish to the satisfaction of the chief of police or city attorney that such a necessary sufficient security personnel should be provided by the permitting for the duration of the event. It seems too vague and I think that if we're going to make that requirement, we should put some quantifiable measurables around that. So if it's, you know, X security per X square mile or whatever, I mean, it should be something so that we're sure that everyone's having the same criterias put on them and that it's universally applied to everybody who's making the request.
So you put some language in such as, but not limited to, and then just describe some of them?
And, and, right, and the same thing goes with the. section, section two on the next page where we're talking about supply a plan of operation that meets the needs for the event, including but not um, limited to water, electricity, those kinds of things. I just, you know, oh, and that there would be, the applicant may be required to pay any fees or to sign an agreement. I think again, that there should be an establishment of what the fees associated with whatever we're asking people to pay so that there's uniformity against all events, all people are paying the same. So if we're going to charge, you know, again, X for use of water, use of electricity or whatever, that we're sure that everyone's being charged the same things. That's my two cents.
I, if I might, I probably, I prefer the vagueness of number seven, allowing the chief of police and city attorney the, the leeway to determine uh, determine what security personnel, I, I don't know the, I don't know that there is a uniform. It probably is based on a number of things, including the type of event, um, and the location of the event would be my guess.
Because I, the Craftcom thing, I think was a, a good example of the police department, working with them, determined how many of the police department people we needed, how many security people they needed to employ because there was alcohol. But if, if it's a run with people with their dogs, the requirements would be much less, I would assume. And that, the police have, the police department, it's best to determine that.
I guess if you could make that determination, then you can make that determination. And if you're using the criteria to establish it when you're looking at different events, then you could distill that criteria down to some key elements that you would publish so that, again, to make sure that everyone's being uniformly applied that same criteria.
I, I think that, I, my, my guess is that there are too many varied scenarios to be too uniform. That would be my guess, but I don't, I don't know if, if we can come up with something.
I mean, if there's, unless there's a, someone would say, if you're expecting this many people, you require this much in security personnel.
At least a guideline like that in general.
You know, if it's 5,000 people, you need this many security people and 10,000 you need this. And I guess that would best be determined by the police department if they could put any quantitative measures on that.
From our experience, um, the, the, the police chief and representatives of the police department generally determined in the meetings, okay, what are you going to have as far as personnel, hours, training, or training requirements, we need to see. What's your emergency plan for events that might arise? So they generally have it already outlaid or outlined by virtue of their experience. So, so there's, there wasn't, there wasn't any confusion about what the security was going to be. It, it was all addressed by both sides. Having a realization of how important that was to the event itself. So leaving it generally doesn't necessarily detract from what you're saying because it comes up in detail when you discuss it.
Do, by this item in here, does that put the city at risk from a lawsuit if there, something happens in an event and they want to say that it was determined there wasn't enough security and therefore?
Well, representing the injured party in that, in that sense, my claim against the city as well as the event holder would include that. You're going to look at the standards that apply and determine, number one, did they apply? Number two, were they applied adequately and considered adequately by the department? So that's invariably going to come into play. Because a lawyer who's representing an injured party is going to use a panoply of, of arguments to, to have both sides in that litigation.
Well, it's, it's number seven, this particular item, is it help us to be vague in those sort of situations or is it to help us to be more specific or it doesn't matter?
No, I think you look, if you look at the checklist of what your requirements are, the question is, are you comprehensive regarding the substance, the general substance that you're seeking from the applicant in this event? Have you overlooked anything in those categories? Because they're generally described. So where you fill in is the detail that really comes out as a plan of operation. So from a legal standpoint, when you're developing this ordinance and you have these standards in there, the question is from administration, have we covered everything that needs to be a concern? And, and I think based upon our experience in the past, it's fairly comprehensive.
I, I have some questions or thoughts as well. So under 56 dash two on page one, item number two, I know you have highlighted 25 persons. Um, and I, I'm guessing, I'm guessing you believe that would be a point of uh, discussion, you know, how many people?
Yes.
Is it necessary to, to, to qualify for this permit? The other thing in that section is that it talks about mobile food vending gatherings. So if a food truck says, you know, puts out there on their app that they're going to be at city park and they, and they're expecting 30 people, right? Is that, and I'm assuming a food truck would hope for more than 30 people. Uh, but now they have to, they have to have a food truck, a mobile vending uh, permit and license. And in addition to that, they have to give, according to this ordinance, 180 days notice. Uh, and, and fill out this application, which I think is, if that were me, I would be beside myself.
We did change that, 180. We were, sorry, we were suggesting 30 days before the operation.
30 days. But again, the, the point stands that, you know, a mobile food truck is not going to give you a 30 day notice that they're planning on setting up in the park. And, and that's what is required if I'm reading this ordinance correctly.
Yes, and the intent was of course there, but like you stated, it can be viewed otherwise as if it's a rally, a food truck rally. So where that will be planned most likely far in advance. Now, yes, if you were, like you just stated, that is a good point. So should it be stricken from that? Should it be tweaked a little bit? I guess what is your?
Could I suggest that you need to define that?
Yeah, define it.
Term.
Yeah.
You know, and it, and it may not light activities in the park, you know, unless it's, rises to the level that it's, you know, precluding other activities. It may not be the same in every location, but as a use of public, you know, well, it depends on where it is.
Yeah. And I mean, it, it talks here, this ordinance does speak to um, flow of, and I, I don't know if I'm going to find it quickly, but talks about restricting flow of traffic on public and private property, right? So there's a sense in which, I mean, you, what you don't want is a, a special event blocking the driveway to a public or a private property, I think is probably the intention there, so.
We want to go there.
Right.
On that, that aspect. We shut down 14 mile when we had the parade.
Right.
And we have the car show, that's off shutdown.
And it's not saying, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We've never had a problem with that, that, that dealings whatsoever. Because a lot of places, places, it does hinder the person or the business and they've been very good with it all year. So, so we got to want, and there's so much wording we're trying to put in this thing. I mean, this, to get it perfect, no, we're not going to do it right away. That's for darn sure. But I mean, we, I, if we bite at it, I think we can get it, get it done. But just like you say, in 180 days, you want to put it down to 30 days. Well, I, I, I think that should be discretionary between you and uh, the person wanting to either bring the food truck in for the party or whatever they want to do. Because some people don't really know what they want to do right away. And, and you know, they might say, you know, all right, next week we're going to get Bobby, Bobby Boo's donut truck or something, come to the, come to the house. So now it's, they got to get a special permit for that? Nah, I don't know about that.
That's my graduation party analogy.
And it's, it's, just to clarify, it's not saying that you, you would not be allowed to, for instance, block a driveway, but it's saying that, that proper application and proper procedure would have to be followed to ensure that those things are taken into consideration, if I'm reading this correctly.
And then I, with meeting with Suzie, we had asked about uh, an item three under 56 dash four. Do you want the applicant to be required or just requested to meet with the city attorney, city manager, police chief to supply the said plan of operation?
Required. So it means if you're having a block.
I could say, at, at the request of possibly, because if it's something that they've submitted a very detailed plan for a small event.
Like a block party, right?
Do you want to say maybe requested?
Yes, maybe requested at the, you know, request of city staff. Because if John looks at the, the proposal and says, it looks good to me, and so does the chief of the police department, everybody signs off on it. I don't know that we need to make them meet with city staff.
So the applicant may be required at the request of the city to meet with the city attorney or administration, at the administration. And then we had stated, because our current process is, that's been ongoing for, I don't know, probably the last four or five years. We have two applications. And Suzie and I did state that it's probably best to just pare it down to one and just call it application for special event, that's the intent, rather than special use because, and really then you specify, so then as you're going through, you can, if it's just a one day or whatever, the special, just random event, they don't have to fill out all the other stuff. But it's just like, this is, covers everyone and that's the intent. So I originally had two and then Suzie and I talked about it and we realized it should really, it should only just be one because we don't want to be, that's too much paperwork. Um, and then we had asked at what point will they have to, because for instance, some of the events have to do a formal request to council. So what would like cause that? I guess is that, do you want that outlined? I don't know if we actually stated that, that, because right now the car show, Fourth of July, like formal request is done. Um, any of the walks and those are done. Some of them do fill out these applications, some of them simply just do a letter. So that's tied in as well. Do you want them all to?
I think everybody should fill out the same form.
We want to be consistent with all the events, um, across the board that.
Yeah, so if they send you the letter, then you just email them the form and say, please fill this out so we have it on file.
And I, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I don't know that we need to vote on all these special events personally. Um,
That's what we were wondering. At what point does it go to where it's necessary to have council?
I'm thinking that when it starts involving traffic flow issues, it should be approved by council, is my thought. So street closures, if, if you are using police department resources, maybe that's something that, you know, comes before us.
Can I, can I point?
Does the chamber, does the pa, the clause, the clause and posit, that's at the park, if they weren't doing a walk, would that be something that we need to approve? If they're just contained within the park? Yes, I know.
Sorry. Can I point something out about special uses, which was kind of my only comment on this really is, so two, well, there's two things about that. Special use is a term that's used in the zoning ordinance to describe special land uses. And so I think maybe another term would be less confusing.
That's, yeah, Suzie and I talked about that, yeah.
Than that. But also, to the degree that this deals with private property, which the special use definition does, the zoning ordinance already does that and calls it a temporary use. And those go currently before the zoning board of appeals, like the pumpkin sale and we've had other things, Jim. Try to fake us something other than plasma, yeah. I mean, we've, we have the, a procedure for those to go before zoning board of appeals and be reviewed and approved for certain timeframes. And I, I think this needs to be harmonized with that, uh, so that you don't have conflicting things occurring in terms of the approval process.
Maybe that's why there's two different applications, because some things, I don't know that the zoning board should have to get involved in the chamber of commerce issue. What would be an example of where it would have to go to before the zoning board?
Well, as it, as it's written right now, any, any, any use of private property like this, that is other than the regular use of it, I can find the definition of temporary use for you and read it to you, but uh, would tend to go before the zoning board of appeals. And so we just want to make sure that if there is overlap, that it's going the right place. And, and, you know, right now, I think there is overlap between those two things potentially. And, and you don't want two conflicting things in the code.
A, an event was when Phil Cavill had a tent sale. You needed a temporary use to have the tent put up, correct?
Correct.
So that would be part of that. It's an event. It's kind of a special sale event or whatever is going on. So I think that's where it'd have to harmonize with that use.
Which does, I guess, does the flower sale or the fireworks tent that's out there, Clausen Center, apply?
Those also apply. Um, something that we haven't had is um, I think the JC's have like semi trucks. They put Halloween haunted houses and nobody supplied here in Clausen, but that would be something that the ZBA would have jurisdiction over.
Which is what originally section 56 dash five exemptions, number, yeah, number five. I think Suzie said to, nice said to strike it, but maybe that is where it harmonizes with the, the temporary use. Because this is temporary and portable buildings, uses structures and special events is outlined under, that are regulated by the zoning board of appeals. So it's kind of taking that out of this and then zoning handles those.
Yeah. It's not just buildings though.
Well, it says uses too.
I think your, your suggestion when city resources are used, either city property or police personnel or DPW for blocking off was a very good suggestion.
Thank you. Kind of a tipping point on, because then council can determine if we want to spend the money on that resource.
So it will be overtime, council. Are you fine with, as you stated, the, the suggestion of the 30 days and/or at the, as how we stated?
Discretion.
At the discretion of administration? If it's, you still want to set a time, like three days, like still kind of have minimum? Or is that still too? Too much of a burden, I guess?
Because if it has to go before the zoning board, three days isn't going to be adequate notice.
We're not talking about going in front of a board for it.
In some instances, they would have to.
But if, yeah, I guess if the, I guess maybe that was more going back to the definition of probably the, the gathering, a quick.
Yes, there's a, that's where my concern seems like that, that part isn't clear enough to then make all the specifics that go along with it. And we need to define the special event more clearly to then be able to be more specific on all the other requirements. And, and once your definition's clear, then the process and which steps and which, which city group they need to go before makes more sense. It's more clear.
And I know one of the last things we had talked about and John and I had spoken, and then as in recent, last month, where would a protest and/or march fall under this? Do they need a timeline? Because the school did participate. Now it is on school grounds. Is that considered? I do have exemptions for political and/or, but should we have an extra thing that actually states that as well? Or is that because it's a school issue? Is that again, kind of separate?
Well, they coordinated with the police department, right? I mean, that's, there's still coordination.
They were told, yeah, yeah.
Is required for that. So there would need to be some.
So would that have, should have come before council because that.
They use police resources.
Yeah.
Which would mean that the homecoming parade that's done by the school through the neighborhood from the high school to the park would need to have special permission from council.
Which I believe they do right now, yeah. Okay, so that's the cattle, that kind of is what determines it. So that's good. That gives me guidance.
Yeah, when they have their homecoming and stuff like that, they sort of, they fill out one of these.
They do a lot, yeah.
Sure.
They do a letter, yeah.
So as, as I'm reading this, just to clarify, let me put a scenario in front of you, but you talk about this chapter or this ordinance shall not apply to the following spontaneous events, and this is under fifty-six dash five, number four. This ordinance shall not apply to spontaneous events occasioned by news or affairs coming into public knowledge within three days of such public assembly, provided that the organizer gives written notice to the city at least twenty-four hours prior to such parade or public assembly. So in that instance, the police would have jurisdiction or authority to disperse any gathering to protest if they don't give twenty-four hour notice to the city that it, that it would be occurring, is that?
I guess that would be, what is your interpretation, John?
Well, I was just thinking of something where I shouldn't give you any notice. And I'll use the Starbucks situation. So Greg and I have some clients who were ejected from Starbucks and they want to, you know, create a demonstration because it's immediate, the attention given, the action taken against our clients and so forth. And so they ask us our advice, and of course, we both say, as their clients, paying clients, of course, that, fine, it's an assemblage, it's a political issue, it's a, it's a constitutional issue, forget the claim against Starbucks, but you have constitutional rights that you have a right to express that happened to you. You were deprived of the right to gather in a public place. Heck with you on getting notice, so you get the people, people are there, they're going to gather and off we go. So you'll have that situation potentially, you wouldn't have it here, but you can never say-
Wouldn't have Starbucks.
But you can never say, I've got a daughter who's a district manager, so she's in the thick of it. But you, you, you want to reflect that your notice in advance is reasonable, but always anticipate there's going to be an exception over which you have, may have no control.
And applicable to, I think, to the event, right? You're talking about the right to assemble and free speech, we're not trying to preclude that, but we're trying to, for organized, we're trying to, for organized events, set a criteria, right?
So it's your, so it's your minimizing the impact, the ancillary impact on the community, on traffic, businesses, interruption and so forth. You have the right to have that advance notice because there are tangents that arise from such a public event. And you're using your public health, safety and welfare powers.
The Supreme Court has ruled that this kind of thing is allowed, this kind of permitting is allowed.
Right.
Is that enough?
Yeah, so we're good?
And I don't, I don't want to prolong this necessarily, unnecessarily, but I will. Mike, with the, our city clerk, with these ordinances and drafting these, do you draft these? You work, is it a collaborative effort?
It's collaborative. My, my language isn't as legalese as John's, so he tweets some of it.
Nobody's legal.
Which should be, really, non-legal.
I try to do mine as, as layman's terms in looking at the code or looking at other cities and how they've drafted it, to try and make it as, granted, there are some nuances where you want to be vague and add the insert language of, to be legal.
Or the legal implications, like, you know, the guardian waiver. Again, waiving my fifty-nine page opinion, but that, that is law going back to the creation of this country. And that is, and I'll tell the public this as well, when you're ever confronted with a form that says you're waiving the right of your child to sue in case they're injured, go ahead and sign it, it's illegal. So go ahead, don't create an argument, just sign it, it's illegal. You cannot take a child's rights away that they assert when they're eighteen years old because they have until eighteen to assert those rights.
Did you just give free legal advice to everybody watching this one?
I did, I did. I believe in that.
All right.
Okay.
No charge.
So you're good, Mike?
Enjoy this stuff.
You're, you're one of, I think, four people in the city who do, so.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of approval to submit Form 5583 to the Michigan Department of Treasury, which will fulfill our obligation under P.A. two zero two of two thousand and seventeen to request a waiver and plan of underfunded status for Merz-defined benefit pension plan.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the submission of Form 5583 to the Michigan Department of Treasury for an application for waiver and plan for our Merz-defined benefit pension system in accordance with Public Act two zero two of two thousand and seventeen and to allow the city manager to sign and submit the application and plan as presented.
Support. Any questions? Comments? Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Pollak?
Just that this was part of the legislation that came out when they were trying to make changes at the end of the year. Thankfully, they didn't change our sunset provision, but this is part of it, is responsibility. It's Protecting Local Government Retirement Benefit Act, and this is part of our responsibility because we're under sixty percent funded. But what I will do is attach a copy of our plan to submit to the state treasurer for pension bonds, and hopefully that will grant the waiver by itself. And then, you know, sometime soon, that'll be, we'll come off that list where we'll have to file the waiver.
So this requirement is required regardless of who you've gotten the pension bonds. This would have been something that we would have had to have done even if we had not gone through the pension bond process.
Right. They, they look for things you've done to improve your pension liability, even outside of whether it's bonding, if you've done additional funding, if you've made changes. We've been close to new hires for a lot of years, but our pending, our funding percentage continues to go down slightly, although, starting now, now that the funding's accelerated, it'll start to go up a little bit. But it would take us a while to get to sixty percent funded, so we'd have to file for this waiver each year and report to the state treasurer what we're doing to continue to accelerate our funding. But in this case, since we're trying to bond for pension bonds, I believe that will be enough. And then if we're successful, then we won't have to file this waiver because we'll be a hundred percent funded.
Did anybody else have any questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
And then motion carries. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a proclamation recognizing the month of April two thousand and eighteen as fair housing month in the city of Clausen.
Madam Mayor, I move the proclamation declaring the month of April two thousand and eighteen as fair housing month in the city of Clausen be approved.
Support.
I want to say that the fair housing month, April of two thousand and eighteen marks the fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the federal housing law under the Civil Rights Act. And the landmark law, along with the other federal and state legislation, broadens access to housing regardless of race, color, sex, national origin, age, marital status, religion, disability or family status. And fair housing month is designed to, designed to heighten people's awareness of their rights under the law when pursuing the purchase of rental of housing. And the housing counselors of Oakland County, Community and Home Improvement Division are experts in fair housing laws and are ready to assist any individual or family to ensure their rights when purchasing or renting a home.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of the closure of South Main Street on Saturday, July seventh, two thousand and eighteen, for the Downtown Development Authority's Eleventh Annual Cinema in the Streets event.
Your honor, I move the Downtown Development Authority's request to close South Main Street between Fourteen Mile and Madison on Saturday, July seventh, two thousand and eighteen, from four thirty P.M. to twelve midnight for the Eleventh Annual Cinema in the Street event be approved.
Support.
Questions or comments? Did want to, and this has been an event for, I believe it's eleven years at this point in time, and it's always hugely attended by everybody in the city. And I'm sure that our DDA director, Joan Horton, will be back at some time to let us know what movie we're going to be able to watch in the streets. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of the list of bills as presented.
Madam Mayor, it's paid bills.
Support.
Questions or comments regarding the bills? Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
And the bills are getting paid. City attorneys report.
No reports, other than, as you know, Brenner has been doing some opinions and he has done an opinion on the Airbus B and B, so you'll be getting that. And he'll be making a report to you on the charter process when you have your next meeting, May first, which is laborious, but simple in the development of the process, laborious getting approved by the attorney general.
Okay. And the next item on the agenda would be the city manager's report.
I just have a couple of items. We did have a lot of residents asked if the city could do anything about the frequent outages of power around the city. We contacted Mike Pelchesko, who's our regional rep. I, I've requested he come to a council meeting and address their substation issues, why we have so many frequent outages, especially in some areas. He did briefly explain to Harry Drinkwine that we have three main substations that feed the city and they're all in need of replacement and repair. I gave him a little bit of a pass for the ice storm because sometimes it's beyond their control, but the frequent outages when the weather's perfectly fine and there's no wind are unacceptable. And we're trying to put pressure on DTE to get the upgrades completed and a timeline to do it. So I did ask Mike if he could come either May first or May fifteenth. I'm waiting to hear back from him. He did say he would check to make sure he's cleared with his higher ups to come and talk about it. So when he's available, we'll get it out there. So if anyone has questions for him specifically, I would welcome you to come to that meeting and ask. But we get a lot of excuses when we have these issues, and I've told Mike, he knows how frustrated I am, because we, I get tired of telling people we can't do anything about it. What we can do about it is put pressure on DTE to fix it, and that's what we're going to do. So, and Mike's aware of that, and I know they are working on things, they've made some changes and upgrades, but they need to do more. So I'm trying to get him here.
Would any residents' communications help with the pressure that they need? I'm one of those people that, it doesn't, I mean, the wind can just gently be blowing and I'm without for a couple, a couple days and it's very frustrating because it's-
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to contact DTE and let them know. They have sophisticated equipment now where they can tell, if somebody says, "I've had a lot of outages," they can identify how many they've had in that area. And that's something they need to address because they know the substations that feed those areas and more than likely, they know what's causing the outages. Sometimes it's trees, they're doing tree trimming, I know that, trying to help. So there's a lot of things they can do to help, but a lot of it is equipment related.
I guess sending a complaint to the generic Detroit Edison, people feel that it's just, I'm wondering if sending or writing letters to our representative directly and if that is appropriate, that we provide that contact information on our website so that people can send emails and/or letters directly to him so he can see the frustration that you're feeling and the volume of people that are upset.
I will do that. I will ask Mike directly if there's an address where it'll get specific identification. I mean, residents have ideas, I think he should hear them. I had a resident who suggests maybe they have some form of local hotline where you can identify it a little bit quicker and get more relevant information. My biggest complaint with Mike a couple of years ago when we had the significant several day outage was, "Don't give me an estimate if you're not sure when power's coming back." I'd rather have, we don't know, than six o'clock and then have it at five forty-five, have it changed to midnight and then six A.M. It's frustrating. You hook up your generator, I told him, "I'd rather hook up my generator if you tell me midnight and have it come back on at nine at night," and then say, "Well, I don't mind going out and shutting off my generator." But when you tell me six P.M. and it's three P.M., and then I'm scrambling at midnight to get my generator hooked up because I don't want to lose my food, that's what's frustrating. So he did say he would talk with them about their estimates. He did say they have experts look at every outage to try and decide timeframe-wise how long it'll take, but they have to do a better job, they just have to.
They just need to replace the failing and aging equipment that's here in Clausen.
The pressure we can put on them is to replace it. Don't tell us you're going to replace it, tell us what you've done. And I know they have done quite a bit, they need to do more and give us the timeframe. When's it going to be done? Because the frequent outages when the weather's fine are the most frustrating. And he can, he can express to everyone what's causing them. And there are, I mean, sometimes a tree touching a line causes an outage. So they are working on, we need to trim areas. And I know they have a big section of Clausen, they're actually working now on trimming. So there, there's a lot to the process, but I'd like to get him here to explain to residents and get questions answered because it is very frustrating.
Thank you.
And then the other item was just to mention, I did get good news, our standard and poor is rating, it did, it's double A minus still on our MTF bonds, we went up to double A. On the others, we went from double A minus positive to stable. And that just reverses when we went from stable to positive, but it's still a good outlook. Our pension bonds did get pushed back to sale a couple of weeks at least, we're still waiting for treasury to give us dates. I did see PFM today reached out again to the contract at treasury, trying to get that done. So hopefully we'll have dates and we'll still get that sale done. Seems like now with rates going up, the longer we wait, the more bond rates are going up. So we're trying to push that so we can get it done by mid-May.
There was initially, we were looking at doing the Department of Treasury meeting the week of the twenty-seventh, is that still on schedule to be done? Or has that been pushed off?
They did say that they would have dates for us by mid-April. We're a little past mid-April now and we haven't heard back, so we're trying to push to get it done that week, preferably if we can get it done before April thirtieth, we could still move forward with the sale date of mid-May. So we're, we're asking and we're kind of at treasury's mercy right now, but we're trying to get them to understand, and part of what she put in the letter today, Kari put in the letter today, was the rates are going up, we're trying to take advantage of good rates. So the longer we wait, the more likely our rates will go up.
Okay.
I do have one question, if everybody else has done. I know as one of the projects that were assigned today was a deadline for a list of suggested brochures and handouts for the building department. And I haven't been on top of my email today, so maybe I missed it, but-
I sent it, actually sent it, it's a weekly report last week.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Jim's been wonderful and on top of-
Excellent.
Things within his department, so I appreciate Jim doing that.
Thank you.
And I had a question, it was in a discussion quite some time ago, but would you check with Harry Anderson to find out if there's been any movement regarding the parking on Walper? I think that's the Woodpile Street, the residence, is it Tacoma? Tacoma. Residents are concerned if there ever needed an ambulance needed to go down that road, even when parking's allowed on both sides, it's really too narrow to even get an ambulance down. And I think Harry was going to look into that, if you'd remind him, see where we're at with that, that would be great.
I'm sorry, I misinformed you earlier this evening, you, I told you Walper, so I was correcting, I was correcting myself there.
I didn't think it was Walper, I'm like, "Okay, we'll go with that." Thank you. Thank you for falling on the sword. That's all, did anybody else have anything to mark?
Yep.
Okay. The next item is new business. There's a few things going on and coming up. Currently, the Friends of the Library Sale is still in full swing and it's through this Saturday, the twenty-first. And this Saturday, the Music Lady is going to be there for a concert from ten thirty to eleven forty-five. And I guess you should bring your whole family and she'll be doing a sing and dance along. In addition, this Friday is the Chamber of Commerce fundraisers, swing into spring. And I believe that you still can buy tickets. It's from six P.M. to ten P.M., the Club Venetian in Madison Heights. Tickets are fifty dollars and they include dinner, beer, wine, a drawdown raffle and the silent auction and the duck pond where every duck- auction, and the duck pond, where every duck is a winner. So make sure you, make time for that. The 28th, there's the Claussen Pub Crawl, which is a fundraiser for the Senior All Night Party. You can get tickets at the door, it's, I believe it's $15? Yes, $15 per person. Unfortunately, you missed the deadline for the T-shirts, but you can still join in and help support the Senior All Night Party. Let's see, oh, April 30th, there's a presentation at the library, UFOs Over Michigan. You should call the library to register. Registration did start on the 2nd, so make sure you call so you can get a space. May 5th is the Police Department versus Fire Department baseball game, assuming it's not snowing that day. I'm not quite sure what the specific time is, but we're hopeful the weather will clear, and regardless, dress appropriate for the weather, and come cheer on your heroes. That's all I have. Anyone else?
Yeah, Lions Club will be out on the streets, April 26 through May 6, where we do our white cane. It'll be kind of hard this year because of the street situation, so we're going to try to hide in a corner somewhere and stick our cane out so somebody can throw money at it. So anything we can do, anything the public can do to help us, we appreciate it, because we're not going to be able to be standing in the roads that much because of the construction. So, and that's about it for me.
I did talk, I did talk to several business owners downtown, and they expressed appreciation for the communication they received about the construction project. They're really happy with the communications they received.
I think Harry and Joan are trying to work together to notify everyone. I know Harry said he might need a hip replacement because he walked the entire business section downtown and delivered that original message. But we are delayed, obviously, because of the weather, they have to put down striping, but they told Harry yesterday, they're going to be out there tomorrow with the lane markings and start. So we'll see. I guess as long as there's not snow on the ground. They can't do it when it's wet, and as long as the pavement's not wet, they want to get the striping and get started, because obviously, they're already a couple days behind.
Yeah.
I know, and Harry had his informational meeting, he talked about, he was actually going to walk and make sure that he coordinated parking and driveways with all the businesses around there.
Yeah, he indicated today that his biggest concern would be deliveries for ACE, but he is going to try and work that through with them so that they might even have a possibility to exit out onto Bowers to get back out. So he's, I know everyone that's asked him, he's tried his best to meet them on-site and accommodate whatever issues they have. So he'll be happy to hear that it's appreciated, that communication's appreciated.
Okay. That's all from us. The floor is open for public discussion.
I would like to just say a couple things, in case. Just, I wanted to state a reminder to anyone interested in running for office this year. It is a big election year. The filing deadline is April 24th, so if you're interested in state senate, state rep, county commissioner, any of those things, you file at Oakland County Elections Division. So April 24th, if you want to appear on the ballot, if you are a Democrat, Republican, or a Libertarian, they will actually appear on the ballot as well, because they reach the status. The precinct delegate filing deadline is May 8, and they file at the county as well. We are not the filing official anymore, they file at the county. And if you are interested in running for the school board for Claussen, that filing deadline is July 24th, so you have more time for that, because they appear on the November ballot. But we will have a clearly very contested August primary with a lot of new faces running for office, so it'll be a busy time. Just wanted to tell that. And then, May 1st, I will be bringing forth, hopefully after Brenner and John have looked at the charter amendments, I do have three that I had them review. I have approximately 16 that I wanted to try and do over the next five years. That was part of the old, in 2009, there was a charter commission that met, and kind of those got put on the back burner, a lot of things. So that's my five-year plan, is to kind of introduce two or three each election to try and clean up some of the old language or whatever that's in the code. So just wanted to tell you, hopefully, because we have a deadline of May 15th, if we want to appear on the August ballot, then we're going to be able to piggyback onto that because it's a federal election, so we don't have to worry about any cost or anything like that. And then if we, if you're not in agreement with any of those things, and we have longer if we want to appear on the November ballot, so we also have that option as well. So hopefully, we have that, working together with that. So just a couple of things, and I just wanted to let you know that there is also a vacancy on the planning commission as well now. Scott Jones is moving out of the city, so just wanted to let you know that.
What's the deadline to register to vote?
That is July 7, whatever that, I've got to think about where.
It's a Saturday.
Sorry, then it's July 9, July 9.
July 9, and that's for both the primary and the general?
No, that's just for the primary.
For the primary?
Correct.
And then, so for the general, it would be?
It would be October, I should have these dates now. It's always the Monday, but then because it's Columbus Day, sometimes they move it, so it's 10.
About a month before, is it?
Yeah, it's always about 30 days before. So want to take into account, you know, those things. I'm really trying to push, and I will try and meet with the high school and try and really have a voter drive, I'm hoping, maybe like end of May, or right before they leave to try and, I've met with, I've emailed the civics or government teacher or whatever, if there's anyone who is 17 or turning 18, if they're not registered, please come in. Some of them have to actually get it for extra credit, so they have been coming in to register, because we really want to let them know, because in order to vote absentee, if they're away at school, they have to register in person. So a lot of times, they'll register by mail, they're away at school, and then all of a sudden, they want to vote absentee, and they can't in November because they didn't register in person.
Don't they have to, they have to vote in person for their first election as well?
If they didn't, if they registered by mail.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Must vote in person. If they register in front of me, if I stated, if Victoria or I took the registration, then they can vote absentee.
Nice. And then just as a side note, on the precinct delegates, you can mail those in?
Correct.
Which is an ease in registering to run for precinct delegate as well.
Yes, and we have, the information is out on Oakland County's website. I probably will be posting to our site to kind of tailor, piggyback off that soon once the deadline passes, just so people know kind of who will be appearing on the August ballot. That's my information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call for public discussion. Public discussion is now closed.
Madam Mayor, move we adjourn.
Support. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Have a great night, everyone.